Your honor.
Your honor, you're ready to go? All right. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et sec of the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Act. Roll call.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Mozzarella.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Here.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lemanowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please?
I can do that.
Did you get some error from?
Any testimony that he gives tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Mr. Lemanowicz, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that he gives tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, the meeting is open to the general public. If anybody has anything to speak on other than what is on tonight's current agenda, please do so now. See none, hear none? Resolutions?
You can do that.
Like he said, okay. So we have four resolutions. Everybody can vote except Berkowitz. Application 2528, 2512, 2511, 2518. If I can have a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Teddy. Okay, now here, Quinn.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willings.
Here. Yes.
Okay, let's get to the agenda. Application 25:22, Dharmesh and Avani Desai, 39 Pitt Road, Block 422, Lot 2, Zone R3, requesting a C variance to construct a shed contrary to Section 430-10.C, side and rear yards, and Section 430-35, Column 10.
Can you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Right.
You can sit down, you can base, lower your arms. Please state your name and spell your last name, starting with you, please, man.
Last name is Desai, D-E-S-A-I, and first name is Avani, A-V-A-N-I.
And you, sir?
Yeah, last name Desai, D-E-S-A-I, first name Dharmesh, D-H-A-R-M-E-S.
Great, thank you. Why don't you tell the board what it is that you want to do?
Yeah, so we were here and the shed, to build the shed, permission to build the shed was reviewed and there was a...
No, last name, it was an engineer's report, right?
Yeah, and then...
You got the engineer's report.
The grading plan was reviewed and it was, I think the grading plan was for the 3.5 feet wall and we were asked by the honorable members to, you know, put it under 3 feet. So I have a new grading plan with two feet 11 inch retaining wall.
So you read the engineer's report dated July 17?
Yes.
Do you agree to those?
Yes, I do.
All the conditions?
Yes.
This is, this was basically last time we postponed.
Yes.
So... So this is the new grading plan you cut out?
Yes.
And it's compliance with every engineer request, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and they want to comply with it.
They want what?
They are in compliance.
Yes.
Got it, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
Hold on.
Um, anybody in the audience wish to ask any questions of this witness? Come forward. Please. Can, can you?
No, you can have a seat.
Yeah.
So this is your opportunity to ask questions of either of these two witnesses. Do you have questions?
Yes.
Okay, so could you just identify yourself?
Leona Hopkins, 25 Pitt Road.
Great, thank you. And where do you live in relationship to this property?
Next door neighbor, one flat down the Elton, so next door neighbor.
Okay, great.
So the vinyl fence on the thing that's on my property and it's put on the other side of the property.
Okay.
Um, okay, and the new plans, the retaining wall goes the entire length of the vinyl fence, is that accurate? So the retaining wall now goes the entire length of the vinyl fence?
It says, well, my husband...
Plan?
Yes, that's accurate, okay. I was told by the engineers that the drainage would be aimed at the back left corner of the property, now it appears aimed towards the front of the property. How is the drainage in the front yard going to be handled?
The drainage is...
Can you speak into the microphone?
It's in accordance with, you know, engineer's suggestion, and it's in the grading.
I, well, so, so...
So, so the engineer reviewed the grading plan.
Our engineer, the...
The board engineer.
Okay, because, because the way it looks, it's going to come down to my property.
No, it was reviewed by the engineer.
No, no, whatever, but...
Okay.
Town engineer approved.
Yes.
And our engineer also reviewed, and they make sure that no flow come to the neighbors' property.
Correct.
That's what we understand.
Okay, um, is the retaining wall, so the retaining wall is going the entire length of the vinyl fence, does that mean you're going to dig up another one of my large tree tree roots?
I mean, I would have to dig up what it requires for the retaining wall on my side.
Yeah, because that's the second large tree that we're digging out, my tree roots, which are well within the canopy of the tree.
You'll have a chance to make a comment like that.
Okay.
This is your opportunity to ask questions.
Can I just hold up one second? Mr. Lemanowicz, did you, do you have any opinion of the question about the, where the water is going?
I'm looking at the grading plan.
Yeah.
And it appears that it's going from back to front.
Right, originally they told me everything would go to that back left corner, and then the new plan, it all goes towards the front.
Everything goes to the back corner now, but when they put, it looks like from the grading, when they put the retaining wall up, right now that grades to the back, when they put the retaining wall, bring in the fill, it's going to do this, come the other direction.
Means basically on the road, road side.
It's going to come out through the street, yeah.
Street.
And do you have an opinion if that seems functional?
Well, again, I don't review these, the township engineer does these.
Right, I know.
You know, it seems, it seems like it will flow, I mean, there's, there's elevations here that's showing that it is sloped towards the front, he's got a swale graded in, so it, it appears that it'll flow toward the front.
Okay.
Um, and then, thank you.
No problem.
And will there be additional structure on top of the wall?
Oh.
Like a fence or something like that, because right now, now the property, your property is now two feet or three feet higher than mine, where it was like same level, so will there be an additional fence on top of the wall?
Are you planning to have a fence?
I mean, I, I might in future, or...
Not now.
It's not part of his approval.
Because basically, somebody's going to fall over the wall and, you know, break their ankle.
Did, did the applicant make a request for the fence?
Not yet.
Okay, so he's not, he's out of there.
Okay.
If it's okay, I'd just like to say really quick, if you do do a fence, so there are no issues created for your neighbor.
Yeah.
Make sure you go to the zoning department.
Right, right.
You can only go so high with the fence on top of a retaining wall, so, okay, get your approvals.
Or if you are planning, you can ask the board right now also, right?
Yes, you can. No?
We, so far, we don't...
I'm a good book, I didn't compromise.
That's the rest of my question. But I have a statement.
Any other questions from the audience? Any other questions from the board? Nothing? Okay, if anybody has any statements to make, please stand up.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Right.
Great, just again, state your names, spell your last name, give us your...
Leona Hopkins, L-E-O-N-A-H-T-I-G-H.
Great, thank you.
I have a handout?
Wait, okay, I, I just want to make sure you have the microphone.
Um, how do I hand them out, please?
And we'll mark this O1. What, what is it, did you hand it?
I'm sorry, I'm, oh, it's a photo, it's a...
So it's a package of photographs?
Yeah, three, three photographs.
And are these photographs that you took?
Uh, yeah, over there.
Do you want a copy?
Everybody here?
Whose fence is the white vinyl fence, that's your fence?
Should I do that?
Sure, why don't you tell, first start by telling the board what these photographs are.
Well, that was done at the...
Sure.
Perfect.
So I've lived in Parsa for over 30 years, and here are some pictures to give you an idea of the changes. In the first picture, which is August 2010, you can see that the land gently slopes from property to property. The second photo is March 2024. This is near the end of the construction of the addition, and that's when major soil movement was done without, without... The third photo is April 2025, that's a year later. The construction of the retaining wall was started and stopped after two days because there were no permits. There is concern regarding drainage, either starving or flooding the trees, privacy, aesthetics, damage to the second tree, that's it.
And where's the second tree? Can we see that in the photo, the second tree you're concerned about?
Uh, I'm not sure you can see.
Is that the first one?
No, 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 that's the... So, uh...
The third picture shows, shows some kind of tree growth along the white fence.
So, yeah, the second tree is in here, so you can see the branches over your right hand.
Which photo are you?
The third one, you're correct, so that's...
So this is on your property, the tree, and the roots are over here, that's what your concern is?
Yes, and so the one in the very back is basically a 75 to 100 year old red oak that's six feet, or six feet approximately from the base of the tree, 25% of the roots are gone.
You look surviving?
Uh, I've called the arborist and they've been giving it special nutrients, and we've taken away the grass and tried to make it so it doesn't have competition, and he said, hopefully it'll survive, but I think I'm in four years. It's going to cost me a lot of money just in the arborist box there, plus that, it's a beautiful tree. The second tree is a red maple.
Make sure you use the microphone, okay?
The second tree is a red maple, um...
I don't know how they're going to cut the roots, how are they going to cut the roots?
So, so when you go down, these large trees, the roots do not go down.
Oak trees do.
Well, they, according to the arborist, they're like, no, they don't, and you can see, I took pictures, but I didn't make copies, where you can see major roots were damaged, and you can see some dieback in the top of the tree.
Okay.
The, the red maple, it's at least 10 feet out, it's not like 6 feet from the base of the trunk, so it's not as bad, but I didn't want damage to another tree.
So in hearing what your neighbors did with going to the engineer, getting his input, hearing that our engineer also feels that it looks like the plan will work, does that give you any comfort?
It gives me a little comfort, but it's also like being in a zoo, now their property, instead of being equal with ours, will now be 3 feet high. So whether they have a privacy fence, the privacy fence will block air and sunlight, because it'll probably be five to six feet high, and if they don't have anything, we'll be standing on the edge of the property, and my fence will now be 2 feet. So either way, it's, it's just real. And so that's why I made pictures, so you could see, you know, I'm not against change, but I think certain things should make sense, and this doesn't make sense.
You'll have a chance.
Okay.
So it's the same fence off now that's in this picture, 2010, so it's basically a C through fence as it is, right?
Yeah.
And then on the last picture, so the entire yard is going to go up as high as that highest point, or...
That's, that's what, well, so I think right now the dirt might be five feet high, so they have to grade it, and that's where I was told it was grading towards the back left, and now it's grading towards...
Well, the final engineering plan says it went from three and a half feet to less, less than three feet.
Right.
It turns it, so it's dropped down somewhat.
Still steps. Okay.
Any more questions?
One, one second. Do you have any questions for her?
I do.
You have a question for her?
No.
Good.
So my question is complaining about the roots, so I want to...
Can you pull the microphone closer, please?
Closer to you, please.
She has a question, she has a complaint about the roots, so my question is, is talking about roots in, that tree roots in my property or in her property? Because roots, we cannot stop. I can say same thing, the roots are damaging my property too. And the roots, as I know, the roots goes too deep, it doesn't go like one feet or two feet.
So...
So that's what I, I was trying to understand that how it's got damaged, so, because we didn't start working, so nothing is digging in yet, nothing was...
No, no, you, you took out the roots for the back tree.
No, but that's my question, it's, it's in your property or it's in my property?
I think the question to you is, you're concerned about the roots that transverse the property line.
Right.
The roots of the tree that is on your property, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So there is no roots in my property.
Not anymore.
So that means, that means no one should work in the property because of the neighbor's tree got damaged.
I think you look at reciprocity and you, you consider...
All right, it's back, we don't just got to go back and forth, you answered your question, you got your response.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
No, no, that's...
Okay, great. Do you have, you're good, you can sit down, thank you. Do you have anything further to add with respect to your application?
Not at this point.
Okay. Do you have another individual with a question?
I have, uh...
You need to, you need to...
Come up into the microphone.
Can I stay seated? I had surgery this morning, so...
Just identify yourself.
I am Ian Hopkins, I live at 25 Pitt Road.
I am her son.
And you want to make a statement either in favor of or in opposition to this application?
Yes.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, what would you like to say?
Okay, so it was stated that the grade now is planned to go towards the front of the property. We currently have a major issue with water from the street draining into our driveway and into our yard. That is a very major issue, where we get a bunch of sediment collecting there. I'm concerned that the water grade, in addition, that will be most of the water coming from their property going towards the road, will end up right in our driveway.
Okay. Anything else?
Not particularly, there's just the, the solution to that would have to be have the town put a berm in there or adjust the grading. Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah. I will put this down now.
When you say it comes in the driveway, is it back up under the property, or is it just puddle out at the end of the driveway?
So we get sediment and garbage in, on our property.
That's just coming down the street?
That's coming down the street, all the water flows directly into our driveway, like it will puddle and stream along the side of our driveway into our yard, and we get a bunch of sediment.
And that's currently existing, your concern, if their water comes add to that, you have more of that?
Yeah, pretty much.
Got it, thank you.
Does anyone else have questions from the yard?
Any other questions? Nope. You're good. Anything else up here, guys? Any other questions?
I'm a little lost as to what you're trying to do, you, you're here trying to answer a shed, but you already built an addition?
So the addition was built two years ago, with all the inspection and everything.
How long ago was the, was the, how long ago was the addition built?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. And these particular applications was with respect to the building right here, and then because of the complaint, we learned from the engineer that we should be submitting the grading plan to take care of any additions.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah. He's right. So in accordance with the engineering, then we did the topography survey and grading.
My, my recollection is that you had approval to build an addition that required a soil moving permit.
Right.
But you didn't finalize the soil moving permit.
Right.
With respect to the addition.
Correct.
So when you came for the shed, the engineering department indicated that you hadn't resolved the open soil moving permit.
Correct.
So that caused the shed issue to then morph into an issue with respect to the entire grading of the property. Is that correct?
Correct, and then at that time, we had a grading plan with a 3.5 feet wall, and we were asked to, you know, put it under 3 feet, so this is that updated plan.
But all that grading, all that work is done now?
No, it's not, not all the work is done, no.
The grading part is not done?
The retaining wall is not done.
The retaining wall is not done.
Yes.
But the shed, really not...
The shed is the application.
Right, so...
We're not dealing with anything other than the shed, right?
Yeah, that's my point.
That's what I was going to say, too, that's my point. The, the shed causes an excess building coverage, as you, as you see on the chart.
Yep.
And what's the impervious coverage over there? I don't see that anywhere.
It must be in accordance.
Yeah.
The impervious is not noted as on the chart as needing a variance, just building coverage, that's not an issue, right?
Actually, you, you are not doing any, like a pavers or anything on the backyard, right? It is going to be like a grass and all.
Grading, yeah.
Grading and all, so actually it is more beneficial for the water user being...
And that street is, you know, sloping downwards from, it's a pretty steep slope.
So we're not dealing with the grading issue, we're not dealing with anything on the other engineer's report, other than the fact that the shed, okay, and everything that was non-compliant before from the engineer's perspective is now in compliance, correct?
Do you still plan to put the shed in?
Yes, yes.
Do you still, where on the property? Because it's not shown...
Yeah, I think it's shown here.
It's not on this plan.
Well, that's the grading.
That's the grading.
It shows the building, why wouldn't it show the bullshit?
This is the grading plan, isn't it?
Where is the grading plan?
It's shown on the grading plan.
The shed is not shown on the grading plan.
Yeah, it's not on the grading plan.
It's in the previously submitted plan.
It's on the prior submission. Do you still plan to put the shed?
Yeah.
Four feet from the sideline and four feet from the rear line?
Yes, exactly.
So you still want a variance for the location of the shed, is that correct?
Uh, and the size of the shed.
Yeah, it's 10 by 6, 10 by 6, okay.
All right, so why do you need the four feet? Why can't you move it off the property line more than that?
We can move.
We can move five foot away from, inside.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can move.
Six feet required. Why can't you move it six feet? Can't, right?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Is it already installed or yet to be?
No, it's not installed.
Nothing is done.
So if we approve the shed, you have to move it six feet off the property?
From, yes, I can do that.
Both sides.
And you agree to that?
Yeah, I do.
So then he just need the coverage of about 1% is the whole issue?
Right, which is the minimum.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Um, then anything, we got a conference for this, or?
I think I just, it's, it seems, so we are just voting, just to let you know, on what's in front of us, and the variance that they're requesting is for a 1% overage for the shed. In my opinion, it's the minimus in nature, it doesn't address your other issues, it just, we are talking about this one issue, and for me, it's the minimus in nature, they went to the town, they're doing what the town is asking, they, our engineer also agrees that the water should run forward, so that allows, allays my concern, and the fact that he's going to move it six feet and not even ask for those two variances, I'm going to recommend, I'm going to be voting for it.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Application...
No, wait, wait. They have a conference.
I'm telling you, so if you vote yes for this, that means the major soil is approved?
Well, the town engineer?
No, no.
Town engineer approved it.
We don't approve soil.
You're done.
We don't approve soil permits.
Then where was the notice for a permit for soil improvement? Because we never got notice for soil improvement permit.
That would have been two years ago when they put the addition on, that's when the soil movement permit...
They never got a soil movement permit.
We didn't complete it. But that application was acted on, and so they got their building permits in conjunction with soil movement permit, but they didn't complete that. Now they are. So in, in context with the addition, if you had issues at that time, that would have been the time that you wanted to notify the township. Long and the short, it's going to get done now.
Okay.
Anybody else? Who do you want to frame the resolution?
Application 25:22, Dharmesh and Avani Desai, 39 Pitt Road, Block 422, Lot Number 2, Zone R-3, to issue or grant a C variance to construct a shed contrary to Section 430-10-C, side and rear yards, uh, six, six feet from the property line on both sides, and Section 430-35, Column 10.
Second, one second, is, if we could possibly put in there that they have to get, finish off the soil moving permit as well, right? Is that what, not yet? What's that?
It says, uh, silent.
So he's in agreement with, he's in agreement with finishing the soil permit?
Yes.
That's going to be part of this whole?
Correct.
Resolution. Yep, I'll put it in the resolution.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Uh, yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willings.
Willings.
Yep.
Uh, we pass, and we will bring the resolution forward at our next meeting, and you'll be able to move forward.
Okay.
And make sure that, as per engineers, that this thing built everything according to the.
That's it?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Application 25:24, Anand Persaud, 21 Nocomis Avenue, block 542, lot eight, zone R4, looking for a C variance to constructing new two-story, single-family dwelling, covered porch, shed, second-story open deck with no stairs, contrary to section 430 dash 35, columns two, three, four, 10, 13, section 430 dash 10C, shed side and rear, section 430 dash 275 dot X, and section 430 dash 10I. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you state your names, spell your last name, please? Here's the microphone. Then you can sit down.
Thank you. Good evening all. Anand Persaud, P E R S A U D.
And you, sir?
Creekport Lateroan, L A T E R O V I A N.
And obviously, you're the applicant.
Yes.
And what is your connection to the project?
Uh, so he's my client, I'm gonna be doing the build-out for the applicant, if you guys want to accept my qualifications. I am a builder, I started my business in 2012, built over 500 homes in Bergen, Passaic, Morris, Sussex, and Hunterdon County. I do both residential new builds, additions, added levels, rehabs, and commercial, like commercial, construction. I have employees up to 30, 35 employees, project managers, and a facility in Bergen County.
Um, you're not an engineer, correct?
I am not an engineer, I am not an architect, I have a registration number with the New Jersey State to do general construction. I am a licensed home inspector in the state of New Jersey, my license is active.
Okay, so you're, you're an expert in building?
That's correct.
Correct? And before we get too far into it, have you seen the August 4th, 2025 report from the township engineer?
Yes, we did review that, and we are in compliance with all the factors and all the line items that the engineer put in as comments, we are agreeing, we are agreeing with that, and we will propose the required plans in conjunction with that.
Okay, have you had a chance to speak with either an architect or an engineer about the contents of that memorandum?
Yes, we had a conversation with Frank Materazzo, who is the engineer on file, he couldn't be here today. Anand, is there a reason?
Yeah, he was, he's going away on vacation, that's the reason he couldn't be here.
Okay.
And we didn't wanna push the application, we, I think we waited about 60 days to get on the board to be heard, so in conjunction with that, Frank is notified on this, and he will draw some drawings for the, for the board and for the building department and engineering to review prior to approval.
Okay, so do you want this board to move forward with your application tonight, with the understanding that if the board were to approve it, it will likely require you to comply with all the recommendations of the municipal engineer?
Yes, I will.
Okay, you don't want any more time to talk to your own engineer about that?
No, I'm agreed to, I'm prepared to comply with our requirements.
Because if you wanted more time, I'm sure the board would grant you more time.
No, I am ready to comply with whatever requirements you can suggest.
Now, the board also sometimes likes to hear from the municipal engineer that, that he has reviewed the measures that you intend to implement for stormwater management before they approve the application. You understand me?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, but I spoke to my engineer, and he's ready, and he would do what it takes to get it to be here and ready for that.
Just, what Mr. Johnson's saying is, for us to really hear through the case and understand everything, and I think make an informed decision, we sometimes would rather have the engineering reports and see it on paper prior to going through the entire case, because.
You have to face the fact that you're asking for significant variances on both building and impervious coverage, and which means that the board has to deal with those significant variances.
Without the engineer's report. And the other thing for your protection, if you say you're in compliance or will agree with everything, and the engineer's report indicate you have to make some changes, which might cost you a significant amount of money, you are not obligated to spend that money to do it to meet those compliances, you understand that? That's why it's in your benefit and ours to have the engineer's report, so that you fully understand what it is you need to do to be in compliance with the engineer's report and our codes, and for us to grant those applications and the variances. We only grant the variances, right? Your variances right now, the engineer has not given us any input on, so he might have some significant suggestions for you to have drainage put in, other water runoff, because of impervious coverage issues or whatever, and that may cost you a lot of money. So if you're saying you're willing to do it no matter what it costs, to proceed with the plan the way it is, and you want us to vote on this tonight, then that's how it would be, but be aware of that. I strongly recommend that you get the engineer's report on these plans, bring them back to us, and then have full understanding of what all it entails. If you don't wanna do that, then we'll proceed.
Well, because isn't the problem also for us, what are we approving?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I have an, I have an engineer's report for this dated August 4th.
Yeah. No, we have. But, as a builder, but can you give like a?
No, the engineer and report is from the municipal engineer.
Municipal.
Right, so we reviewed that with our engineer Frank Materazzo.
That was, what, two days ago, three days ago, we reviewed that?
Yes, soon as we get.
And we went down each and every line item, and, you know, the first line item is where we would be agreeing to putting a water.
I think you heard the board speak to what their issue is. Let me ask you another question, is there any other witnesses here in your behalf? Who's gonna support the variances that you're asking for?
I would be the one supporting them.
And you are not a licensed engineer?
No.
License planner or an architect?
No, I would just, I was gonna discuss the application.
Your testimony would be lay testimony?
Uh, yes.
Okay. You're asking for significant variances, I think you need to talk to your client about the size of this building, and or having a player that can show that this building is compatible with its neighborhood. There's nothing here that shows that.
And the site.
You're undersized, lot.
And I understand it can be frustrating, you have to delay, but you might wanna delay rather than get a skeptical, skeptical board going into this.
It's gonna be tough for us to grant variances based on the information we have right here with our engineer.
If I could ask my brother to, because he is very, you know, first and understanding and this, and he would help me along to make the decision if it's all approved. Ganesh.
Do I have to swear it or?
Yeah, now, yeah, if you're gonna testify, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So state your names, spell your last name.
It's Ganesh Persaud, P E R S A U D, first name G A N E S H. I have a question, if we go back to engineer, his engineer, how soon can we get an appointment with the board to review this again?
The engineering is gonna be fact-based. Your, your difficulty right now is showing why you should be, have this house this size. That's planning testimony. Board doesn't get carried away with you 1% over something like that, needs variance, but it's not, here, you're a lot over.
That means you need, you need a planner?
Need somebody to give testimony.
So if you're asking when you would get the late to, it's either gonna be, it looks like October 8, or if the board wants to do a half-hour special on 24th of September. That would be, those would be the two dates. I would come early that day, but then I'm only one vote.
I'd come early, I'm not proud of that. September 24th.
So September 24th, we could have a special meeting, it would start at 7, and we'd be able to hear you then.
And your engineer should definitely be here.
Yeah, can you, can you give me a minute to discuss these layman's terms to client?
Are you submitting this as a corporation's or as an individual?
Individual. This consideration is part of my work.
Forty foot. Yes, you have. Yes. All the time. Hasn't been this much over. Well.
The coverage is usually less than 50%.
And does he understand and know his final?
Yeah. That'll be the next one.
Alright, after speaking to the applicant, we are gonna adjourn this to the next meeting.
I would also suggest that you maybe revisit some of the variances that you have in here, and maybe try to minimize them a bit. Is there anything on the property now?
There is a current structure on the property, yes. Uh, very debilitated, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a bungalow.
Okay. So are you asking that this board carry this application?
Yes, counsel.
To another date?
Absolutely.
What was that date again?
September 24th, 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, special meeting.
You need a, you need a motion?
Move. Second. Yes. And that time will.
And you're gonna give the board all extensions to make its decision?
Yes.
To that date, correct?
Yes.
You don't need to send new notices out.
Thank you so much.
Did you guys vote on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of it. We all voted aye. Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good decision.
Is that allowed?
Uh, that's not allowed, solicitation. We didn't vote on his yet. Solicitation and official.
Probably don't even have a case tonight, you just need to pick up points.
There you go. New, new thing for ambulance chasing. Alright, application 25:23, I apologize for my pronunciation, Anta Joan, Antagoni, Sergiuso? Sergio? Okay, 58 Seasons Glen Drive, block 14, lot 17.65, zone AHD dash two, looking for a C variance to construct an open deck with two landings and two sets of stairs, contrary to section 430 dash 10I and section 430 dash 35, column 13. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Now, my, you can have a seat. Now, my recollection is that you were here a few weeks ago?
Yes.
For a deck, and the suggestion was made that you speak to the town engineer.
Yes, and we did.
Into the microphone, just make sure you're in the microphone, please.
We did talk to him the very next day, and he did send a letter that he has no objection. We talked, I'm sorry, is this on? Yes, pull it closer to you.
Closer, closer. Close, close.
You gotta kiss it.
Yeah.
Pull it closer. Now, good.
So he sent a letter already that he has no objection, because we talked about having a barrel at the end where the spout comes from the sides of the house, and it goes all the way in the back, it's already there from the time we built the house, and having that barrel, we collect the water, we sent him pictures of the proposed barrel, and he agreed that everything would be okay.
Okay, so you have agreed to install those rain barrels on your property to collect the rainwater, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you would agree that, that you would make that a condition of the approval of your application, correct?
He told us that we need to install them before we build the deck.
Okay.
But if I get approved tonight for the deck, I'm planning to install it early next year, because my, my mother passed, and I have to go back home for three months, so there is no time, I live, I live on September 1st, so I cannot go through the building department, and thermes, and the delivery of the stuff, and get the inspections done, so I said, let's postpone it for early next year. So by early next year, when the ground breaks, I guess, if we don't install them this year, it will be before the deck starts.
Okay, so you will install the rain barrels?
Yeah.
Before you install the deck?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Anybody in the audience? Do you have a year in the resolution for the usual 180 days? Well, can you get it done, can you get your permits within the next 180 days?
How much time do they give?
That's six months.
Six months. I'm gonna be back on the 24th of November, so with the snow and all that, I don't know.
We're just talking about when you get your zoning permit.
Oh, when I pay for it and receive it, I have six months. No, you have six months from the approval of your resolution to obtain your zoning permit, and then when you're ready to go to construction, if you have to, you can go when you're ready to do the work.
So just the permits?
You just get a permit, you're not doing the work.
Yeah, yeah, I can do it.
Yeah, you have to do the work.
I don't know the steps needed, right? You sent me a letter telling me. You, we can talk, you can call me.
Okay. And anybody in the audience have any questions of this witness? I see none, you're none, you guys good? Anybody have any statements for or against? I see none, you're none. Anybody wanna make some comments?
This is a beautiful application, applicant has worked hard to go to engineer and get that thing done in short time, so it is better improvement and I'm happy.
Application 25:23, Anta Joan Sergusi, 58, Seasons Glen Drive, block 14, lot 17.65, zone AHD dash two, recommending a C variance to construct an open deck with two landings and two sets of stairs, contrary to section 430 dash 10I and section 430 dash 35, column 13, and agreeing to the request of the engineer for the rain barrels.
Second, ready.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willings.
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're approved, and we'll make the resolution in our next meeting, and you can go ahead. No, no, nope, you're good. Thank you so much. Yeah, you wanna hang out, it's fine. Alright, application 25:31, B10 Hilton Court, owner LLC, 2 Hilton Court, block 202, lot 310, zone SED dash 10C variance to install signage.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening.
Steven Tombalough here from Weill Hardware.
You look fresh. You look fresh.
Thank you. You know, the reason why, I mean, I don't know the engineer, but from his name, he's one of mine, so I felt bad, so I gave my card, so if you ask questions, I'll help. Felt bad. So we're here tonight for the zoning board this time, for the new warehouse, which if you driven by Route 10 and drive, and you'll notice it's largely completed, this is the new warehouse that's under construction, the owner is Link Logistics of B10 2 Hilton Court, and the planning board, up to this date, the planning board has, you know, approved all the site plans and the variance for that, but at the time, we weren't quite finalized on the signage, that's the only thing left for approval purposes, is, is the tenant and owner identification signage, I believe, aside from the height of the identification signage, are above 25 feet given the height of the building, all the other signs, wave finding signs, little IP signs, are all essentially conformant, but we do need a variance for the height, of the mounting height of the owner and tenant identification sign. I'm lucky to have sitting next to me Louis Reyes, who is the engineer who did the site plan, he's been on this project for years, and he's now taken the task of helping get the final piece, the signage, hopefully approved this evening, just so, I believe the warehouse is scheduled for completion later this fall, so this, hopefully if the board looks favorably upon the signage, the signage should be installed and ready to go when the tenant moves in, hopefully in a few months. So without further ado, I'd like to ask Mr. Reyes be sworn in.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
State your names, spell your last name, please.
My first name is Louis, my last name is Reyes, spelled R E Y E S.
Louis, can you give the board benefit of your educational and professional background?
Okay. I have a bachelor's of science degree from New Jersey Institute of Technology, civil engineering, I've been working in the industry as a civil engineer for 10 years, I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey, I'm a professional engineer. Cessie, who I work for, I'm a project engineer there, and we're the civil engineer of record for the project, and we came before the board to get the site plan approval, so I'm back here for the signage application.
And Louis, would you qualify as an expert in civil engineering when you appeared before the planning board over the past year?
That's correct.
And are your licenses remaining good standing?
Yes.
Would the board accept Louis Reyes as an expert in civil engineering?
He's qualified?
Thank you very much. Louis, since you've been handling this project for pretty much a day one, can you give, explain to the zoning board why we're here this evening, what the signs were proposed, and explain, you know, the technical reason why we're here for the variance for the not variances?
Will do. So, the signage application submitted to the township includes two building mounted signs, one freestanding monument sign, and a post and panel directional sign, there's a couple more that I'll get into, so. So most importantly, why we're here is for the building mounted sign. The applicant proposes to install two building mounted signs. Per township code, a business that fronts on two or more streets is permitted to have two building mounted signs, which this application complies with. At the north corner of the building, the applicant proposes to install a building mounted sign displaying the Link Logistics Company logo. Link Logistics is the applicant and the lot owner, and this sign will face Hilton Court. At the southeast corner of the building, the applicant proposes to install a building mounted sign for U.S. Auto Force, the tenant. This sign will face Dryden Way and Route 10. Both building mounted signs comply with the township's ordinance for maximum signage area and permitted projection from the building wall. Both signs will be internally illuminated using non-glaring lighting. The only signage-related variance being requested pertains to the maximum permitted mounting height. The township allows for a maximum height of 25 feet above grade for the zone that we're in. However, due to the building height, a 25-foot mounting height will position the sign approximately like two-thirds of the building facade. The applicant is proposing to mount the sign at a height of 36 feet above grade. The 36 feet is the top of the sign, which places the top of the sign just below the building's parapet. In addition to this, there's a freestanding monument sign. The applicant proposes to install one freestanding monument sign on the west side of the driveway entrance that connects to Hilton Court. This sign is located in the same position that was approved in the previous site plan approval application. The monument sign will comply with all applicable township requirements, including signage area, height above grade, and setback dimensions. The freestanding monument sign will be internally illuminated using non-glaring lighting. I'll touch upon on other signage too, since we're here. The submitted signage application also includes a post and panel directional sign, which is proposed to be installed within the landscape island between the two driveway entrances. The purpose of this sign is to guide visitors, delivery drivers, and customers to the appropriate areas of the site, including the main entrance, receiving area, and will-call office. Each loading dock door will be labeled with a visible identification number to help direct deliveries and improve coordination during shipping and receiving operations. Lastly, door graphics and signage will be installed at the will-call and receiving office door entrances for identification and wave finding. The main door and employee entrance will also include door graphics. The mounting height variances for the main identification signs, the building mounted signs, will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone and the zone plan and ordinance, and will not constitute a substantial detriment of the public good.
And that testimony is based on your background as an engineer. You're not providing planning testimony?
No, this is as an engineer.
And that's based on your observation. It's not inconsistent with what other buildings of comparable heights have been permitted by this board and the planning board in terms of mounting heights for IP signs?
That's correct. It seems like this is a normal process because just the sheer size of the building, it just makes more sense, and it'll be more visible for the delivery drivers off of the highway, Route 10, to be able to see the signage. If you place it halfway to the building, it'll be difficult for them to see.
And given the full purpose of this building is to make as easy as possible trucks and other vehicles to find the site and leave the site, signage is important from an operational point of view?
Yes, it's very important from an operational standpoint.
You could also say safety-wise as well.
True, true. I mean, signage, sometimes I've come in and pretty much got vanity signs for tenants and building owners who just wanted to show off. This is kind of really important.
Yep.
Louis was helping them know where to go when they get there.
And in fact, this application is so important, the owner sent its representative all the way from Philadelphia this evening to help out in case the board had any questions. We don't want to take any chances that Mr. Reyes may not have an answer to any question about the ownership and the purposes of the tenancy. So we have Mr. Basilek sitting in the wings, ready to answer any questions.
But he's from Philly, so that could hurt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. For a number of reasons.
Okay, make sure of that, right?
So, yeah. This project, I think I went before the planning board three different times because it just was an iterative process. Each time the ownership changed, they had a different idea of what they wanted to do. And this is the last step, the signage. And it's supposed to be because I think this is a really nice-looking building. I mean, it's a warehouse. So it's only as sexy as it can be, but it's a nice warehouse, and I think the...
You've been doing this a long time.
Once it's done, I think the town's been really proud of it. It's a little prominent. You can't miss it.
Yep.
If you're having dinner at Capital Grill, you're staring at this building. I think it's going to be a good improvement to the town, so.
I have one question. You have the dimensions you made statements about. Both signs comply with the area.
Yeah.
There's no dimension on the signing footage. Do you know them?
Yeah, so there's a signage package that was...
Yeah, but there's no size shown. There's dimensions. Do you know the size of those two signs?
Yeah, the square footage.
Just say it.
I will get this for you. So the north elevation, which is the Link Logistics sign, is 94 square feet. The south elevation, which is U.S. Auto Force, is 127 square feet.
And are they both proposed to be 36 feet above grade?
They are both proposed to be. The top of the sign is at 36 feet above grade.
So you need variance for both of those signs?
That is correct.
That's the only variance they need.
Yep, understood.
I think the height within the SED 10 is the maximum building height is 45, so this building is comfortably below the maximum building height.
Well, it's the architecture. He said you have to sign the middle window.
Yeah.
Don't make any sense.
So that's our presentation this evening. Again, if the board has any questions about the tenancy, the operation, the development, we have our man right here.
I do have a question. What is U.S. Auto Force? I don't mean to belay. I just want to know what it is.
So on to what you had to press up, Mr. Jones, what's your name?
I'm not here with the...
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
It could be just a quick answer.
Yeah, U.S. Auto Force is a auto manufacturer provider, so they mostly do tires, other auto parts as well. We went to a building over in Long Island, and we're doing like another build-to-suit for them here. And, you know, mostly just like tire wrecking, from what I saw.
Totally. I just wanted to know what the business was, that's all.
Yeah.
I did press up for the record. I'm not sure you said your name.
No, I didn't.
What'd you say? I saw that.
Yeah, Arthur Vasiliuk, V-A-S-I-L-Y-U-K.
And what's your relation to the company?
I'm a senior project manager for Link Logistics, the developer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just made it worth your while.
We had to get you on record, just to make sure the guys knew you were here.
I approved you were here. Now let's wrap it up.
Any other questions? Any other questions of this witness?
Okay, ready?
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Anybody in the audience have any questions for this witness? Anybody in the audience have anything for or against this application? I see none here none. Somebody want to say anything?
This is a no-brainer. I'll be voting for it.
Resolution?
Application 25:31. B10 Hilton Court Owner LLC, 2 Hilton Court, Lot 202, Lot 3.10, Zone SED-10, recommend granting a C variance to install the signage.
Second, ready.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Quinn. Yes. Ready. Willen.
Yep.
Your application is approved. We'll pass the resolution. You can finish the building and put a sign on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Good luck with the business.
Have fun back in Philly.
Get home safe. Hope your teams all lose.
All right, Application 24:43. HK Truck Services Incorporated. 1030 46 Fanny Road/Intervale Road, Block 448, Lot 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, Zone O-S, preliminary and final major site plans with CD variance, major soil moving permit to construct a truck sales and service facility. Welcome back.
Thank you very much, Steven Tombalack from Weider Law Group on behalf of the applicant owner, HK Truck Services. As the board is aware, this is our third appearance on this application. We came originally on March 5th. We were doing the hearing on June 11th, and on June 11th, we had revised our plans and presented exactly what we were proposing to do. But the board thought it would be better if Mr. Lemanis had a chance to review the fully completed set of rather just selected sheets. So we did all that. We prepared the updated complete set of the reports, filed everything. And I'm happy to see that the neighbors, they were so happy with what we did at the last time. They didn't even, they felt comfortable enough that they didn't feel like coming this evening.
I said the same thing.
But next to me is Mr. Canadian, the owner. And what we're here tonight to do is exactly as the board asked for it is, again, we made the effective, we took care of compliance in advance. So we went through Mr. Lemanis' comments, suggestions. We incorporated all those, the voice suggestions. So that's why when I saw Mr. Lemanis' most useful word, I think it's the shortest one I've ever seen because it's pretty much compliant with everything the board wanted, everything the neighbors wanted. It's a great design. So what we're going to hear tonight, you're going to hear Will Haddock, who's from Redcom. Will is filling in for Josh Tyner, who you saw twice before, who was on vacation this weekend for time. But Will has been involved in this project for a long time, knows the project. What he's going to do, we're going to swear and then qualify, and then he's going to show you renderings, what the proposals look like before these slight amount of vacation, and he's going to show you what the renderings look like based on these latest changes. We're going to go through Mr. Lemanis' report, which pretty much, we agree with everything, we're going to explain why we're responding that way.
Excuse me one minute. So my understanding is, and at the last time you had a lot of neighbors here, this opposition, not one of them's here tonight. They're all in agreement with what you're proposing, the changes that were proposed. You followed every recommendation we made and they made, okay?
Yes.
And now you're just going to show us a picture of what that looks like?
And we're going to explain how we complied with what the board... And just so, again, the board wants to see what it's approving, hopefully, and we're going to show you exactly what you're approving. So when it's built in a year or two, you can say that's what we approve of. So that's how we're going to see it. And Mr. Canadian is here to, again, answer any questions out of honor and fund as a caution. So Mr....
You're overly cautious tonight, right? You're overly cautious.
He doesn't want to see us for a while.
Ask Mr. Johnson to swear you all.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your names, spell your last name, please.
So my name's Will Haddock. Last name is H-A-D-U-C-H.
Louis, can you give the board the benefit of your professional and educational background so we can qualify as an expert in civil engineering?
Sure. So I graduated from the College of New Jersey in 2012, Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I've been a licensed professional engineer since 2021, and I'm currently working as a Senior Civil Design Engineer for Redcom Design and Construction.
Well, are your licenses in good standing?
Yes.
Have you been working with Mr. Tyner and the other persons in the Redcom design team on this project pretty much since inception?
Yes.
Okay. And are you familiar and comfortable enough with the design to testify as to the latest changes this evening?
Yes.
Very good. And had you had a chance to review Mr. Lemanis' report dated July 28, 2025?
Again.
Okay, great. Well, did the board accept Mr. Haddock as an expert in civil engineering?
He's qualified.
Thank you very much. All right. Will, I mean, I don't know if the board has seen that one to accept that that is a new rendering. Let's mark it.
Sure.
The next one.
This will be...
We'll probably mark A1 with today's date.
Sure.
Go on the next one.
Before.
A1.
I don't have a note that says we marked anything, by the way.
Well, just put today's date to make sure it's a...
So Exhibit A1 for 8-6 of 2025 is basically a rendering of the site plan that we had shown at the second hearing, the last hearing. And you'll notice a couple things. On Intervale Road, there's these three-to-four-foot shrubs here. That was something that was called attention to as a way to improve the site for the residential areas of Intervale Road. You'll see that this is a six-foot fence all the way along this property border, which is something that changed as well. There's also some very minor changes that you'll see, like this portion of the parking lot, which has six spaces, which will change to five. But it's really, it's really pretty minor changes. But it was something that the that the audience last time seemed to think would be beneficial, so.
Let's mark this one. This is the latest rendering. Mark as A2 with today's date, please.
Sure, so Exhibit A2?
Yes, please.
8-6-25.
If you can continue just highlighting the recent modifications of the board's use, what's the latest?
Sure, yeah, so minor changes to the parking lot. The impervious coverage changed within a fraction of 1%. It was, I think, 0.3 difference, still well within the code, which was 80%. It's, I believe, in the low to mid-70s. And then, yeah, so now along Intervale Road, instead of the leather leaf by burning, we have Cypress, Spuce, and Arbeide. And besides that, it's a very similar site plan to what we looked at before. And there were some comments on the most recent review, which are things that we'd be more than willing to work with if, you know, we go through a resolution compliance process. Things like marking on the plan exactly where the fence transitions from six feet to four feet. Things like showing on the landscaping plan where exactly the site triangles are in comparison to the plantings. There were some comments on the stormwater. There was a rear elevation that we'll be showing in the construction details. And, yeah, but we're definitely willing to continue working through the process and making sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, so.
So the applicant, as far as you know, takes no exception to any of Mr. Lemanis' comments and recommendations?
That's right.
Great.
Again, we have a bunch of people here that can answer any questions.
I have a report as well dated June 4. Did you see that?
That's on your letterhead?
John, your report?
Yes.
Did you choose one?
Well, let's deal with it. The first question was, there was no revised planning report. The only question within that report was, and I think it's been answered through prior hearing, the hours of operation we have down?
7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
But you use Saturday as well, right?
Saturday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Okay. The operation of what you do there was described. You sell new and used trucks. Repair vehicles. I have a note that was kind of like by appointment. You just drive in with your truck and say, hey, I need a new something or other.
Primarily by appointment. You do have an occasional truck that comes in that's unexpected.
Excuse me? I can hit it back with the mic.
It's primarily by appointment. But trucks do come in unexpected on occasion.
Okay. The phasing of the development, we did talk about it. And I don't, my notes don't indicate, we came to a conclusion, how you were going to keep it, stay in operation, which you said you wanted to do, and build this building.
Yes, so we do plan to stay in operation in the old building during the construction of the new one. And then we would move completely into the new building and start demolition of the old one.
It's going to be a tight fit, right?
I'm not the expert in the spacing of that.
I'm talking about in terms of having the business model work, meaning you have customers, and having the space to have a construction going on as well as vehicles stored on the property.
I understand your concerns.
My biggest concern is that you all of a sudden encroach either onto Intervale or, I guess that's called Fanny as it goes up.
We would not use any of the streets for trucks if that's the concern. We do have another location that we could run more of the business through in South Plainfield to take on any excess if there's spaces.
Put a condition in that there will be no staging, construction trailers, or anything else in the right of way. That's fine with you.
Yeah, I understand that. That's okay. Yeah, I understand that. That's okay.
And the Phase 1, Phase 2 really doesn't exist. It's a project, right? I mean, you've got to get started.
Correct.
You're not going to have one phase die, one start, another start.
So what would they get a TCO for the building and then?
Well, the new building.
You probably can't get a complete CO if the whole project's not done. Am I correct?
Right. It'll have to do with TCO. I don't know what the building department does with that, or do they issue TCOs by phases? I mean, do they issue TCOs for some of these bigger buildings?
Well, 50/50 has people in it and it's still being built.
Okay.
Or the CO would be limited to the new structure.
Sometimes towns won't give you TCOs if the whole thing's done.
Yeah. You just have to update them every 90 days.
Okay.
Whatever the building firm wants.
Well, I want to see you bump, jumping back and forth here.
No, I mean, again, once Phase 1 is done, the face, the business will move and the demolition will begin. Because we're going to be needing that parking, so.
The phases are on the revised light plan still?
Yes.
They are?
Who will monitor the operations?
If there's a dotted line that'll show Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Is that only on one sheet there or something?
Oh, no, it's on several of them.
All of them?
Yep.
That's the entire list. That covers that report. I've summarized it.
Thank you.
What's the latest revision of your plans?
Revision 6. We'll say reviewed per board comments.
Gotcha. It's just really hard to read in this small version of it. Is that, so that has a list of variants and design exceptions in it, correct? Is that a correct list of all the variances that you're seeking?
Yes.
Should be consistent with what Mr. Lemenowitz has given.
Yeah, that's right. And it'll be shown on the cover sheet, the designs.
This cover sheet right here.
That's right.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Sure.
In my report, I noted that the six-foot fence in the front yard along Intervell Road is being replaced by a four-foot fence, but there's no detail. Is it a solid fence? Is it an open fence?
Yeah, so we have a detail for the six-foot fence shown in the details. And I did see the note to show how it, exactly how it transitions to a four-foot fence.
Right.
And, yeah, so solid vinyl fence. And so it'll be 30 linear feet of a four-foot fence until it notches up.
Okay, because solid fences are not allowed in the front yard, so that's a variance.
Understood, okay.
But is that something, is that something, generally, you would want a solid fence in the front yard and asking the board for a variance for it, or will you do like a skid trover set, like slats, you can skid through? Or is that something you believe should be solid?
I don't have a response.
I think it's architectural. You would look beautiful and be the best.
So we're going to ask for a solid fence.
And I think it was always shown as solid discussed previously, so.
And then wasn't that what some of the issue was, the lower fence and then putting the Arborvitae in, right?
Yeah.
The height coverage. That's why it didn't need the six-foot then.
So four foot from the front, set front property line, I mean, I'm sorry, it's four feet tall, starting from the street side, 30 feet end, and then it transitions to 60?
That's right.
Is that right? Okay.
The other, another question was that the plans show a cast-in-place concrete wall holding up the parking lot adjacent to the building, and it says that I have a finish approved by the board. There's lots of different finishes. They can put a form as they pour the wall, so you won't get color, but you'll get texture. It'll look like rocks, look like brick, look like something. You could go as far as attaching a face, a skin of cultured stone to it, so it looks like real stone. It's our, that was the question for the board, is what are you looking for there? Because if the plan says.
What do you want?
Approved by the board.
We'd be willing to like come up with a nice design and bet it with Mr. Lemenowitz, and if he disagrees, if we have an issue, we can come back, or we just like to work with Mr. Lemenowitz, but if the board wants to see it, we'll come back.
It's really a good question. How long is this wall, this retaining wall?
This wall, I actually don't have the linear feet on me right now. I believe it's around 20 feet, and it turns a corner.
That's it, over that corner by the driveway?
That's right. And it's just to help us get up to grade for this parking.
It's four parking spaces.
Got it, so four times nine, then.
Six.
So.
Particular.
And how high is it?
It's less than four feet. I believe it varies between one and three.
So start off at one, gets up high at around four, and take it back.
That's right. At the corner, it'll be at its highest.
Which is going to be a ported place?
That's right, cast-in-place.
What do you prefer to do with finish?
I think brick or stone would be good suggestions.
That stick-on stone?
That's right, yep.
Any other questions?
No.
The properties within the Tier 3 wellhead protection area, so the board has to review and approve the operations and contingency plans, and I don't think we have that yet.
We'll provide one.
Okay, because that, the board has to approve that.
For the timings, you mean?
What's that?
Operational timings?
This is operating contingency in case there's spillages or well protection. And if that's something the board can entrust Mr. Lemenowitz to confirm, we'd be happy to work with him.
Yeah, they trust our board engineers, so.
You have to run it by the Board of Health?
It's, the ordinance requires that it be a joint approval by the Board of Adjustment and the Board of Health. So I'm not sure if you can.
Can we do a approval contingent on something, or is that going to hold us up here, Mr. Johnson?
It's going to hold you up.
You don't have it, so you can't approve.
But can the board deputize Mr. Lemenowitz to do it on behalf of the board?
Can your deck get up this?
I will defer to Mr. Johnson.
If the board is comfortable with that, you can add that to the resolution.
Just double more on Tom.
I mean, these people have done everything they could to present a great case to convince their neighbors, improve the area. For me, I would have no reason to believe they won't continue this behavior, so. To have them come back to, for us to look at something when our expert could look at it, and I'd rather the expert look at it. Can I hold them up?
Agreed. Agreed.
So it's approved, conditions on Mr. Lemenowitz's approval of the operations and contingency plan.
Correct.
That's one of the, I mean, he's going to be approving many things. Just adding another one.
We authorize him to approve that, too. Is that okay, Mr. Johnson?
That's okay.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I would suggest that perhaps this is an application that would require the board to ask me to prepare a draft resolution in conjunction with applicant's attorney.
You know your board's limited.
So that we make sure that we capture all of the conditions that have, because I think there were conditions discussed about the timing of lights, things of that nature that have gone through this process.
Anything we can do to help with the drafting process?
Anything else?
That's it.
Any questions from the public of this witness? Anybody here from the public for against? I see none here, none? Go for it.
I approve. So he mentioned Capital Grill.
Okay, here we go.
All right.
Want to put a resolution together? Are we going to do the, or it's going to be contingent on the?
Approving the drafting of a resolution of approval.
Right.
Subject to review by counsel.
Right. Do we need to make a statement?
You do.
Yeah, so I'll speak if you don't mind. I think it's been a great way to do business. I think you guys showed that you were looking to get this approved and to work with your neighbors. I think it's a great improvement to the area. I think the fact that nobody is here, but we had a roomful of people last time, is an indication that you did a great job in taking their advice and giving us a proposal that we can approve. So we should have more like this when the applicant is willing to work with their neighbors to come up with a fair solution. So the fact that you presented it this way, the business makes sense, the site looks great, I'll be recommending and I will be approving.
Resolutions. Are you authorizing me to draft a resolution of approval?
Application 2443 HK Truck Services 1030 46 Fanny Road/Intervell Road, Lot 448, Lot 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Zone O-S preliminary and final major site plan with C and D. Recommend granting this. Major soil moving permit to construct a truck sales and service facility, authorizing our attorney to develop a resolution in conjunction with Mr. Terabatia for the approval. Is that good enough, Mr. Johnson?
That works.
Second, ready?
Berkowitz.
Well said.
Jaskowicz.
Yes. Thank you. Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willans.
Yep.
Mazzarella.
Yes. Okay. Once you guys draft the resolution, build away. Thank you. I got to echo, I echo what Scott said down there. It was just, appreciate what you did for everybody around the town. We appreciate it. Motion to adjourn? Hold on.
I'd like to ask Mr. Johnson if we could have, I want to raise an issue for the board.
You could, if you wanted to discuss the cause of wars, you need to make a motion to go into executive session.
I would like to make a motion to go into executive session for five minutes.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Guys, we're going to ask you to leave. We want to go into executive session.
Terabatia, we need to go into special. If you could read it.
We need the room.
You could be this.
Go to Capital Grill.
Thank you.
Good job. Good luck with your building.